Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:03. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, especially all of our staff who are here tonight. It's very exciting. Is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we did take one vote in executive session. We approved one homeschooling request, five-zero. It is now time for our showcase, so Dr. Cummings will let you do some introductions.
Well, this is a happy occasion. And so I am, first of all, let me call up Jill Hague, so who is our Assistant Special Ed and Director and Preschool Director. And so Jill is going to talk to you all and introduce our staff and talk a little bit about our recent five-star, five-plus star rating on Bright Stars.
Thank you. Who's going to have the staff come on up? It's really them. Yeah, that would be great.
Jill, can you, so that we're streaming live from TV, if they can...
This way?
Lauren, you want to help them?
That would...
Because then everyone that's watching at home can see and hear you, but they also, our staff are now in the background of the camera.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. Well, thank you. Good evening, members of the school committee, Dr. Cummings, members of the audience here and at home. Tonight, I'm honored to speak about the accomplishment of the Mariners' pre-K program. After many, many months of discussing Bright Stars accreditation, I'm happy to share the news that our Mariner pre-K has earned five stars, plus stars. For those of you who don't know, Bright Stars is a statewide program that evaluates and rates the quality of early childhood programs in Rhode Island. This achievement is a rarity for schools not run by the state, and it's a testament to the school system's commitment for providing high-quality education to its youngest students. The Bright Stars rating system evaluates programs on a range of factors, including learning environment, family and community engagement, staff qualifications, and professional development. Programs can receive a rating up to five stars, with five stars indicating the highest level of quality. This amazing team started this journey to earn accreditation in February of 2020, but was put on hold until last year and completed this rigorous undertaking in February. From the first pre-K meeting that we discussed applying for Bright Stars, the teachers were only hesitant for a few moments, until I said, "We have a wonderful program with great students and staff, and we need to highlight this." From that moment, they were all in. In addition to meeting one to two times a week during common planning time and work through the ECHRS scoring and determine areas which we needed maybe to address, the teachers and paraprofessionals also completed several online courses. I would like to thank the school committee and Dr. Cummings for their tremendous support during this process, from updating classroom materials to an amazing new playground with a mini track and tricycles. Our program has grown from three to six classrooms in the past five years, and the support from Dr. Cummings and the school committee makes our program such a success. I would like to thank the NES School Principal Lisa Wilson and School Dean Tracy McCallig for working with our team to adjust the pre-K schedule. They always made sure any changes would support this process. Also, a thank you to Steve Gormley and the operation staff for always making sure the playground and fenced area were equipped and safe for our students. Also, Steve, I'm sorry for my numerous texts and never-ending question, "Do we have enough mulch?" I would like to thank these wonderful educators who embrace this process. It's such a privilege to work in this district among this terrific staff. Lastly, we may have earned five stars, but now I'd like to introduce the many shining stars of Mariners' pre-K. We have Mrs. Whitney McGinn, Mrs. Patty Carasato, Mrs. Megan Garish, Mrs. Gillian Lemke, Ms. Emily Gallo, Ms. Sue Carlino, and Ms. Beth Dorich. Oh, Kristin Marcel... Oh, Kristin, I'm so sorry. And Kristin Marcela. Thank you all.
I just wanted to say a couple things. Stay up there, maybe a question, I don't know. But I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I'm just so, so impressed. We were thrilled to hear about the rating and, you know, we've, we've heard about the vision that you and Dr. Denton have had for this program and the growth in enrollment and being able to staff it and the partnership with Steve with the facilities. So really, really, really exciting. And a big thank you, not only to the staff for coming tonight, but for all that you do. I can't even imagine being a preschool teacher. My, my kids are 22 and 24, so I haven't had to care for three-year-olds in a long time. But thank you for every day for all that you do. And our preschool numbers wouldn't continue to grow if the program wasn't amazing and the teachers weren't amazing and the leadership from our, our department too. So, so thank you for coming tonight, but thank you for all that you do every day for the littlest, cutest kids in there against it. So thank you.
I want to add my thanks along with Tammy and also to say congratulations. And I would be interested to know if you know how many programs on their first attempt are awarded the highest five stars?
I, I don't know how many were awarded on the first attempt.
Okay, we are back in the meeting, and it's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, hearing done, we are moving on to oral reports. Are there any school committee members that have a report to give?
Yes.
All right, Alex.
On April 29th, Justin, Diane, and I attended the annual meeting of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. And I do want to make a brief announcement that while at the meeting, the 2023 Howard K. Award was presented to our very own Diane Nobles. And just a quick soundbite on this, and this is from their, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees press release. This recognition does go out to only one school committee member in the entire state of Rhode Island. Named after the late Newport School Committee Member and Public Education Advocate Howard K., the award is given annually to a school committee member who has exhibited outstanding leadership in public education. Diane has served as a member of the Narragansett School Committee for 18 years and has served in various capacities, including policy review and the negotiation subcommittees. She has also been the vice chair, clerk, and parliamentarian. Diane has also exhibited dedication to ongoing professional development as evidenced by her graduation from Rhode Island Association of School Committees Leadership Development Academy and her 158 hours of RIASK professional development as a member of RIASK Master Academy. She has proven to be an exemplary leader and mentor, and we are very honored to have you continue to serving with us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the nomination, and it was a complete surprise, completely unexpected, but I'm very much appreciative. Thank you.
And before you continue, I just want to say congratulations to Diane. That's very, very exciting. And my, I wonder is, is that the longest term for an elected official in Narragansett from school committee or town council? I don't know. I'd love to be able to find that out.
I don't know.
Could be.
Yeah.
I know Frank Wyatt may have been on there quite a bit as well in his total number of years. I don't know. That's the only thing I can think of.
Well, congratulations, well-deserved. And we are very fortunate to have you on the school committee. So that's very exciting, well-deserved.
Thank you.
Alex, did you have an additional report to give?
Nope, that, just that one. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a report to give? Diane?
Yes, just two items. On April 21st and 24th, Principal Warner and I had the privilege of interviewing our nine applicants to be the first student representative to the school committee, brand-new position. And I'm very pleased to say that our candidate that was chosen, Maya DeAngelis, is with us this evening. It was very nice of you to come. And we will do a more formal introduction of you when you start to serve in September. So congratulations, Maya.
Can I ask her a question? My only question is, what made you interested in applying for this position? And I, I don't know if the microphone's on or if you have to push a button or not. Okay, yeah, yes, now.
So we were actually in a school assembly when the dean of students, Ms. Sylvia, came to us. And she was like, "We have this opportunity to be a student rep for the school council and, or the school committee." And I knew like immediately that I wanted to be a part of it. I had the pleasure of being on the interview committee for our new principal, Mr. Fiore, and a math teacher as well. So I knew I wanted to be involved in it. And I knew, know that in the future, I want to take some sort of route like this. I don't know entirely, but thankfully, I have a whole nother year to think about it. So, but I knew, like, the second she talked about it, there was a QR code to scan, and I pulled out my phone immediately. I was like, "This is mine." I knew it. So I, I did a little research, and thankfully, I think I charmed Mr. Warner enough to give it to me. Yeah, so thank you so much.
Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you next school year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And one more item. Earlier today, I attended the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council Forum on Education. And it was focused on three different panel discussions, one on state funding, one on the education workforce, and one on innovation and choice. And whenever I go to education forums or similar meetings, I always listen for ideas to bring back to our district, ideas in terms of improving governance or improving curriculum or improving policy and so forth. And today, there were many ideas that were discussed in all three of those areas. And yet, I'm not bringing any of them back because we are already doing all of them. So congratulations.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have a report to give? Okay.
I, I do. Yeah, there was an equity subcommittee meeting earlier this month where we talked a little bit about cultural awareness in our schools and the types of programs that we have to support the kids at the elementary, the middle, and the high school. And I was happy to hear that the parents and the faculty were involved in making those programs start to happen now, kind of coming out of COVID and not worrying about bringing people into our schools and such. I think that's it. Oh, and actually, we, we talked about the accessibility of the, the programs that we do have right now. And it looks like there's a little bit of room for improvement, which I'm sure there is in everything. But I was just really impressed with the conversation back and forth between administration, faculty, and the parents. I mean, the, the community that we have here is so rich and connected that from a parent and a school committee member, I, I feel like we can get things, we can get things done pretty well, being small and everything. So it was just really refreshing to hear that conversation back and forth. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of progress coming in those areas. So just wanted to thank the administration and the parents for, you know, being on that committee and doing such good work.
All right, thank you. So we are on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thank you, Tammy. Well, it is a busy time of year. So, you know, I'll just do a, a couple of highlights and then we can move on to the school committee business. First of all, you may have been hearing in a lot of the statewide conversations about a recent report put out by Harvard and Stanford where they were really trying to measure the learning loss across the country and within particular districts. And so while we certainly have, you know, some level of variability, some students need more support than others, you know, we were recognized as the single district in the state that has moved beyond our pre-pandemic levels. So, you know, that was really a testament to the incredibly hard work that our teachers put in, the commitment of our parents, of our community. You know, you saw it here tonight with our preschool staff. You know, imagine doing Zoom preschool. And so, you know, really, it's a credit to, to the whole endeavor and the leadership of the school committee as well. So, you know, I just want to kind of point that out to say that, you know, again, we certainly have individual students that might need some more catching up to do, but as a whole, we continue to grow and thrive as a district. And a lot of that is due certainly to the leadership of the people that you saw here tonight and to our administrators, but really to our teachers. You know, our teachers did an outstanding job of having great relationships with our students, keeping them engaged, holding them to high expectations, and really being creative with what they did, not just when we were remote, but once we got back to school, caring for them, being attentive to mental health, but also believing in them. So there's a lot to celebrate there. You know, we are in the thick of hiring. And so we, you know, I am pleased to report that we have a number of open positions. We're close to having filled all of them. We are still hiring for one math teacher and one computer science teacher. But otherwise, we have had great response and very high-quality candidates to all of our open positions. So I'm going to be really thrilled to introduce our new teachers to you in, in the fall. But we are excited about that, and that's been a busy time. What we also are busy doing is honoring our seniors. So they're in their last couple of weeks and are our high school students. So tomorrow morning is Junior Book Awards. And so where our top students in junior class are honored for their academic achievement. And then we move on in, in a couple of weeks to Senior Week, which really is our athletic banquet, prom, our senior banquet, and then graduation, all happen within a week. So, you know, I'm thankful to the, our community partners that help support that. We get great support from the Dunes Club. They are truly wonderful to us, to the Lions Club, to all the community organizations that support our students. It's a happy and exciting time, you know, for our kids. So we're looking forward to the next couple of weeks.
Pete, what's the date for graduation again?
That is Thursday, I believe it is June 8th. Yep, Thursday, June 8th. Okay, then that is my superintendent's report for today.
So I don't have a question, it's just a comment. Really impressive to, we are already aware of the growth that Narragansett made, you know, post-pandemic. But, so it's, it's really a thank you for your leadership and your vision and the teachers as well, but you need to have that vision from the top about how are we going to use our ESAR funds? How are we going to be proactive and make sure that we are doing all that we can for our students to support them throughout the pandemic? And then as soon as we returned back in person, you know, so a big thank you, it was a, a big combined effort, but we needed your leadership to guide us through that and especially to advise how to use those ESAR funds for that explicit tutoring that, you know, made a huge difference. So, so that's all, just a thank you, Pete, to you and the teachers, but definitely for your leadership and your vision.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would also just add that, you know, it's quite a, you know, there's not a lot of wonderful news out there to celebrate, especially when an article that pops up about a Harvard and Stanford study and measuring how much academic loss was, was measured throughout the entire state of Rhode Island. But such joy I felt in the fine print when I read, with the exception of the Narragansett school system. So a real strong testament to the leadership on this committee from you, Pete, the teachers, this wonderful staff that we have in Narragansett, all of the incredible decisions that were made prior to the pandemic just without even knowing about the future ahead, that, you know, the one-to-one laptop programs, how incredible to have had that resource available for teachers to be able to connect to students at home. And to just have been able to dodge something so much more extreme is just a real testament to the work that this district does. And just want to say thank you all around.
Thank you. And I, and, you know, and I will just say, there's more work to do, right? So we're not all the way there yet, and we do have students that still have needs. And I do want to be particular about honoring the work of our principals, who really carried the heavy load at each individual building of making sure every student was known, cared for, being attended to, organizing everything, putting in the countless hours. You know, it can often be a thankless job when you're doing those pieces and when you're kind of making sure that, you know, if, you know, a certain community member has a need or might be upset about something, kind of making sure that their needs are addressed. And our principals really are the front line of that, and they did a really incredible job.
Any other questions for Pete about the superintendent's report? All right, thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve Consent Agenda items CA 1A, CA 2A, CA 2B, and CA 2C?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. On to the budget report. Karen?
Good evening. Expenses for the 10 months ended April 30th, 2023, And that's 68.59% of our budget. Expenses and encumbrances total $30,436,181. And that's 87.82% of our budget. Expenses and encumbrances total $30,436,181, and that's 87.82% of our budget. And we're getting close to the end, so hopefully we can save a few of those dollars for next year.
Any questions for Karen?
I had a quick question. Have you guys crunched any numbers for any type of surplus and have?
It's a little too soon. What happens near the end of the year is we do have our big payroll for our teachers. We think that will be in a surplus, but we won't know close until the end of June.
Okay, yep, thanks. All right, so we're moving on to school committee business. Item number one, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the contract for paving at Narragansett High School to be awarded to T. Miozy LLC in the amount of $143,015 with an option to add alternatives not to exceed a total cost of $248,045?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Steve?
Good evening. How are you? This is a Phase 1, Phase 2 project. We were originally only going to do Phase 1, but with the availability of the contractor to actually do the work, we're looking at the alternatives. I'm just waiting on some final building official approvals, so I want the option to be able to do the full project.
So everyone recalls, so this is a part of our capital plan. The asphalt around the high school is in dire need of replacement. Some of it was severely disrupted when they did the safe routes to school, and so that back parking lot needs a lot of work. Steve is also going to be adding some parking as part of that, and those are some of the options that you see there. And as if anyone has been to the high school during the school day, you know, there are, while it is safe and there are fire lanes and whatnot, there is cars everywhere. And so kind of getting that a little better organized, and Steve has a great plan for that layout.
And so you're fully informed, this is Phase 1 and 2. There's an additional phase that'll happen going into next summer in the front portion of the building. It's just more extensive for drainage design.
Any questions for Steve?
Just so, just so it's clear to the public, so this is the entire surroundings of the Narragansett High School and all new parking, new parking lot, all encompassing in this one approval.
This is, this is from basically the sides of the building back to the whole rear parking lot, the next, which would have been the third phase, now the second phase, if this gets approved, would be the whole front side and the driveway in. It's just that it needs some extensive drainage in there, and there's a lot of engineering going on with that.
Gotcha, thank you.
I just have a question on the bid tabulation summary. I'm always interested when there's such a discrepancy on one item. So the item is replacing the deteriorating sidewalks, and our winning bid had that at $9,250, and yet the next company had that way up at $29,000, and the third company had it at $16,000, and there's such a disparity. And I always wonder if they don't understand or they're answering different questions.
It was just how they tabulated their bid. The contractor that we're awarding is currently the contractor that the town uses, and I'm sure that the work will be done correctly.
And just if there's any leftover material, would you ask Mr. Miozy to do the road in front of the high school?
Yes, please.
That's a whole nother issue.
Any other questions for Steve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we are on to business item number two. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an additional school resource officer to be stationed at Narragansett Elementary School?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? And Pete, just to confirm, this is a cost that is going to be shared equally with us and the town?
Correct. So, you know, this is a cost that will be split 50-50, similar to what we do with the middle school, school resource officer. I'm even a little bit hesitant to say, you know, one exact person goes always to one exact place, you know? The staff is shared amongst the schools, and they do back one another up. This is having a third SRO that will be at the elementary school. As you know, I've shared in the past, you know, study after study, recommendations from the Secret Service, FBI, state police, our local police department, you know, all support for school security, having a school resource officer there. It's been a very successful program in Narragansett. You know, we work very closely with both our school resource officers as well as the command staff at the police department to make sure that we are using our resource officers in the proper ways. You know, our resource officers are not conducting school discipline or any of the kind of pieces that can be cited by studies as being a negative effect of a school resource officer. So we do stay in regular communication with them, and to be honest with you, it's a great resource. We, you know, all the time, Steve, I am, the principals are, you know, if there is an issue in the community that does affect the schools, the school resource officers, not just during school hours, outside of school hours, you know, are regularly in touch with us of things going on.
And this is something that we can revisit on an annual basis during budget season, and the town can as well?
Correct. And so, and that's our discussion with the town manager. You know, we do have resources coming in from our settlement with the dual litigation that will help offset the cost of this. And so we are comfortable in adding this this year without having significant budget impact.
And I just want to say thank you to the town and the town council and the police department, the town manager, because this is definitely something that some of the town council members spoke to us during budget season, that they were really hoping to be able to support and that we would support. And it's been a very kind of healthy working relationship with the town council during budget season. We appreciate them supporting our appropriation that we asked for, and there's nothing more important than the safety of the children at all three schools. So I wholeheartedly support this. I'm glad that the town really pushed for this, and I'm happy to support this. Any other questions or comments from the school committee before we take our vote?
I do, I have one question. Is there a selection process for the actual individual who will be assigned to this if it's approved?
There is. So there are criteria that they use for the selection of a school resource officer. There are both national standards, and they develop internal standards. So Chief Corrigan consults with me, while I don't pick the officer. He consults with me and with the principal of the building where the officer will be primarily assigned in terms of the traits and the characteristics that are appropriate for that age group. And they then go through in the interview process internally about who gets assigned to that position. So it is not, they don't just take the next senior person and assign them. It is a selection process as they go forward.
So being shared amongst schools where we'll be looking for somebody who primarily has a good connection with elementary but can be used at the middle and high school?
Correct, and that's the, quite honestly, the traits of our two officers right now. So Officer Rooney and Officer O'Connor are really adept at connecting with kids with different age groups. They really vary their approach depending on the age, the developmental stages and ages of the students that they're working with. And so, you know, if you know Officer Rooney, he, you know, he is a guy that does a great job with, you know, with our high school students, but at the same time, he has really strong connections with several of our elementary students. So one of the things that the police department does that I really appreciate is that they certainly, while they certainly consider, you know, their hardcore kind of policing skills, what they also look at are those softer skills that sometimes can't be taught in terms of their ability to build relationships, to have empathy, to be caring, to really connect with kids, and that's a really important part of the position that we look for.
I just have one more question. I fully support this. I think it's a necessity in what we're seeing in society today in the violence that's happening, especially towards children. I do question, you know, especially research and studies that have come out most recently on the response to school shootings and the background of the people more apt to respond in what areas. So I would just hope that in the background, we really are vetting that new research, and we're looking at it from both the school side and the, you know, I'm sure Chief Corrigan's looking at that too. But there's always something new that comes out, and it gets really hard to kind of file through, especially with, you know, not every town is the same, right? So I just, just with a caveat of that, having my two little kids in school where they're going to be, I just feel like we need to, if we are going to make the best of everything in safety, we need to keep up with that.
Absolutely, and, you know, one of the things that our resource officers do and the command staff at PD is really keep up with the training, the latest research. And, you know, I really wish I didn't have to say this, is that after every incident, after every shooting, there are new discoveries or new insights, and it develops over time, right? And so the patterns change from year to year, from region to region, and from unfortunately perpetrator to perpetrator, right? And so, you know, we do a lot on risk assessment. We do, they're a part of that team. We do a lot on making sure everyone's staying safe. We do a lot on kind of monitoring social media and making sure that if there are threats or risky things out there, that we're responding appropriately. And in fact, we're right now arranging our next level of threat assessment training through Virginia, so the Virginia Threat Assessment Protocol. So we're arranging that training for our school-based threat assessment teams right now so that they will be, have that for the beginning of the updated training for the beginning of the school year.
That's wonderful, thank you. And I can say not all districts are able to say that they are really taking the research and they are implementing it that fast. And again, I think that's a testament to our administration and just the way we work here in this town. So thank you for leading that.
Any other questions about the school resource officer? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to item number three. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the contract for position of principal of Narragansett High School for 2023 to 2026?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I was wondering, Pete, if you might be able to provide a little soundbite of the hiring process, the involvement of the school community. I know there was so many layers and red tape that had to be gone through because we are a very competitive district, so.
Sure, I'd be happy to give a quick overview of that. So what we do is that when we go through a selection process, our first step is to gather input from the community. And so we were able to gather input both from the staff and the wider community of students and parents through a survey. So we took a lot of input from there. There was some really thoughtful commentary and input from the community on that survey in terms of the profile of the leader that will kind of succeed Dan Warner, right? And so Dan's been there for, you know, a long time, been a highly successful and well-regarded principal, so big shoes to fill, but, you know, we certainly know that the community has some needs that they wanted to express, and so we took that into account. So what we then did is we did a little wider advertising than we typically do, not just Rhode Island than some other districts do. We didn't just look in Rhode Island. We did some advertising and some searching. We used Nasdaq in the New England School Development Council. I am actually on their board of directors, and so I engaged with them, and they did a wider search through all of New England and also included New York in that kind of advertising, getting people interested in it. We then had a really strong pool of applicants. We selected eight applicants to interview from both Rhode Island and out of state. Our committee was made up of parents, students, Maya was on the committee, and teachers. And so they did that first round, and that first round is really meant to be, are you the right fit, right? Could you potentially have the right philosophy? Do you have the right kind of background? Would you be kind of the right fit for our community? We then go to a second round, so that committee selected four applicants to move forward to the second round. Our second round is with our administrators, and so that central office and our building administrators. That round is really intended to be, can you do the job? Do you know how to be a principal? Do you have the technical skills? Would you be a good fit as a leader? So in that round, it is, you have to do a case study around a real problem that the school is facing and really try to kind of use the data resources to figure out what will be the next leadership steps to solve that issue. You have to do a role play with one of our administrators playing the role as a teacher, and you have to debrief a math lesson, actually, with that teacher. So Colleen was a math teacher, our middle school principal, so she played the role of the teacher. And, you know, the candidates have to be as if they have observed that class and really debrief the teacher for that class. So we look to see, do you know instruction? And then we had a lot of questions around instructional leadership, around human resources, about working with parents, about operations, kind of all the things you need to do to be a principal. You know, with teachers, we make the, we ask them to come and teach a lesson before we hire them. This is kind of that same philosophy of can you do the job? Then we go to a third round, and we really talk about, do you know policy? Do you know budget? Can you kind of fit into a small district? Would you be a part of a larger team? Because Narragansett, we all wear many hats, right? And so, you know, the answer to sometimes people ask questions, well, who does that, right? And it's like, I do, or you do. And so, you know, it's just kind of fitting into that structure. So through those all, all of those rounds, we had lots of input from many different facets of the community. We kept going back to our profile of what is the community really looking for, what is best for the school. And through those all, you know, Chris Fiori, who's here tonight, really rose to the top. So, you know, we were pleased to have Chris kind of go through the process. He was shining through it as all, and, you know, we do a deep reference check. His references could not say enough glowing things about him. You know, certainly our student participants really liked, really liked Mr. Fiori and had, in fact, one of the teachers, when Chris met them today, one of the teachers shared just like, oh, you're Mr. Fiori, good, the students wanted you. And so, so that was really great to see. So Chris came and met the faculty today and is actually here tonight, so I'll just invite Chris up to just say hello really quickly.
Let's vote first.
Oh, you should vote first, okay.
All right, is there any other questions or comments from the school committee before we take our vote?
I'll just make a comment when Mr. Fiori comes up to speak with us, should this get approved.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, congratulations. You can start by introducing yourself because you're on TV.
Good evening, I'm Christopher Fiori. Thank you very much for this opportunity, I really appreciate it. I want to thank the school committee, Dr. Cummings, and the audience. I think everyone behind me was in some form of the committee at some point of the process. So, and I have to give due credit to Maya because it's very difficult for students to be on those committees. You're learning from English and social studies and math and science, and now you have to go to another task where you're thinking about, is this an instructional leader who can guide Narragansett High School, which is very different and certainly a mature task. But her questions were thought-provoking, and you could see that she completed her task with such sincerity and pride, so she will certainly be an asset to the school committee next year as liaison. So thank you, Maya.
Well, I just want to comment, just again, thank you for sharing your soundbite on the auditing process. It sounds like it was very extensive. I certainly trusted the process, it was reflected in my vote. And, you know, thank you to the parents, teachers, students for going throughout this entire process of reviewing the applicants. And to Chris, welcome. And to Chris, welcome to Narragansett. I've reviewed your application with us. You know, I was just blown away by the recommendations and the breadth of knowledge that you're going to bring to Narragansett from New York. And we very much look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So Alex, just for the public to know, so Chris comes to us as an experienced high school principal. And so Chris has been a high school principal, high school assistant, an athletic director, a department chair, an English teacher, a coach. You know, has really done it all. And so, you know, we were really looking for someone that has walked a mile in the shoes of members of our community and also brings a great sense of connection and empathy. And so, you know, we know Chris brings those things to our school, so we're looking forward to great things.
Any other school committee members want to say anything? So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Looking forward to immersing myself in the Narragansett school community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to business item number four. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve the contract for position of director of finance administration for 2023 to 2026?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I can't say enough good things about Karen. And so, you know, Karen is, you know, a wonderful, you know, chief finance officer. It's rare that you find someone that both has, you know, wonderful, good sense and really a great idea of what's important in schools and cares for students to match with expertise in public finance and public accounting, as well as a law degree. And so Karen has it all. So, you know, again, we see her expertise every year publicly through the budget process. But what people don't see are the day-to-day decisions that have a huge impact on our success as a district. And so we couldn't do the things we do without Karen's expertise. So I'm grateful to have her with us every day.
And Karen, are you right around sixteen years-ish? Fourteen years? Okay. Well, I'm delighted and really, really happy that you want to stay another three years. We're very lucky to have you and we really appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to the district.
And I'll also add a special thank you to you because, you know, it takes a great deal of patience to deal with the number of numbers that you are working with on a regular basis. And walking through each line-by-line item with us if we were to come to you and to really explain what area of the budget this is coming from, you have to have patience with us as well. So again, thank you so much for all that you do for Narragansett and we're very lucky to have you.
I just want to say ditto and I would like to see it be a lifetime contract.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Congratulations, Karen. Okay, so we are on to item number five. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the contract for the position of assistant director of student services for 2023 to 2026?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
So again, can't say enough good things. Jill is here. And so, you know, one of the things that we discussed is amending Jill's title to make sure that includes the preschool. So we will work on that as we go forward. It's a large amount of her responsibility. And so, you know, one of the important things to know about Jill's job is that it goes far beyond just assistant director for student services. That's one part of her job, but that's not the full part of her job. You know, she does coordinate interventions across the district. She is the director of the preschool. She does do work in special education. But as I said before, in a small district like this, we all wear many hats and Jill might have the most hats. And so, you know, really, we've been pleased with Jill's work and her growth. If you recall, Jill stepped in as director of student services when we were between directors, before, after Leslie left and before Melissa started. She did a wonderful job there. And, you know, I think Jill, every time we need something, she rises to the occasion, but is not only reactive, she's proactive, is thinking ahead. And really, you know, you saw it tonight, you know, leading the charge on the bright stars. That was not a simple task. There were lots of moving parts there. And, you know, that's just the task. You also don't see the day-to-day relationships that she has working with parents, crisis management. You know, on any given day, Jill is going from kind of working with, you know, very upset three-year-olds to kind of doing transition planning for students to running an IEP. So she does a great job.
Any other questions or comments before we vote?
Just a sincere thank you for the incredible hard work, the sacrifices that you've made. You know, recognizing just the five stars is just such an incredible accomplishment for the district. And, you know, we're very thankful for your leadership in Narragansett.
I just had one quick comment. I just wanted to say, I mean, I remember as a parent, your phone call saying, can Caroline be on the front of the preschool? And, you know, seeing something develop from that through all that we've been through, you know, just from a business perspective, I have a business background before I was a teacher, just really, it's impressive. And then to get all of the moving pieces together and to have such acknowledgement early on in your program, I just, I'm a huge fan. And thank you for all you do for everybody who helps make it work very well for the kids because it's about the kids. So thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Congratulations. And our last business item, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the director of finance administration to approve the contract for the position of accountant for 2023 to 2026?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Again, this is a direct report for Karen. So Alyssa Paglia, she does a wonderful job for us. So one of the behind-the-scenes things that people don't usually see, right? They shouldn't see because it's working right, is paying our bills. And so, you know, the demands of that become increasingly more complex as our reporting and accountability through, for municipal finance and also to the Department of Education continue to become more complex. And so the rules for grants for, you know, all other pieces that are tied to our spending and our bill paying. So for example, the Perkins Grant requires a level of documentation that is quite extensive. Alyssa handles those pieces and works closely with Karen to do those. And so she, you know, started us pretty recently out of school, has continued to grow and learn and we're really pleased with her development over the last few years.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. All right. Any communications that anyone wants to mention? So we are back here in June, June 21st, for our regular business meeting at seven o'clock. And also, go Celtics. Is there a motion to adjourn at 7:58?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.